Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Young. I don't have any forms, I didn't know if I went.
Twenty-five dash zero nine-nine, to the sense of greeting the members from August seventh, two thousand twenty-five, and the August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five work session. Second.
Second.
Uh, discussion? We'll call it.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am. Move the adoption of, uh, twenty-five dash one hundred to approve the minutes from August seventh, two thousand twenty-five. To the motion. He can't do it.
Oh, second, that's right.
Discussion.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Abstain.
Trustee Young?
Yes.
Move the adoption of number twenty-five dash one zero-one to approve the minutes from August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five work session.
Second.
Discussion.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Abstain.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am. Police chief Robert, oop, not going to do that part.
Right, we're gonna go get our energetic pills also.
We're gonna scratch those back too. That's our canine. Oops. Alright, sorry.
I said our timing couldn't have been better.
Just to make a grand entrance. Uh, just, uh, so real quick, this is just our, gonna be our big group with, uh, K-9 Blitz who's been out on the streets since the end of, by the beginning of August, but maybe not. Uh, Sergeant Will took a, a, off just to be with after, yeah, intense training. Out there working the streets, I'll talk a little bit about, like, police work he's already done, and then Sergeant. And Sergeant has aged ten years and three.
And dropped twenty pounds.
Yes, he did. So if you haven't seen it yet, make sure that on Friday nights, look at our Facebook page, so we have Friday night Blitz, um. Kind of neat with the football on Friday nights. And we will do stories every Friday about something with Blitz out in the community, so make sure, have your access and video, um, you know, nothing that is, you know, tactical wise, but you get nice little clips out there for, make sure you like them and share it out. No, no, we, we just, we do a segment on the dog every Friday.
And now he's being reprimanded.
He is very excited when he hears people around, he just wants to get out of the car and clear that off.
Is that one of the, we have a new partner?
So I, I just told briefly about when he came out, if you want. Tired of coming around.
Yeah, I didn't have all this gray hair before I started. Actually, according to chief, I'm twenty-two years old. So, uh, Blitz, he's now eighteen months, he was, uh, born in, uh, Poland and imported from the Netherlands. We've been together, so, on, third, third week on the road once we got back, because I took a week off when I got here, and, uh, so far, we've, uh, had four deployments, two for cars, and we got drugs, drug and guns off of one, and drugs.
Looks out another one.
And we had a trap, which was after a training day, and we didn't end up getting the guy. That was our first track, first deployment, first anything, so we learned some things on that, and then the, um, did a perimeter assist with a, uh, certain. Me, it's, uh, I tell everybody, it's like that smart a five-year-old even think that. Every day I go to work, and the five-year-olds are smarter than me, pushing my buttons.
So, dog came from Europe, is that what keep them, their breed, because over here in the United States, they have a lot of time, think that's Europe?
So it's just, and it's the dog breeds over there, so what they do is they, um, uh, shallow creek where we got him from, John will go over there, and he has certain people that he flies off of, and that's where the bloodlines come from, they come over partially trained, and then they finish training them. So he's a Belgian Malinois, but he, he's got a lot of shepherd features, a lot of Belgians are, are smaller build, and, but he, he's a Belgian Malinois, it's just the, the difference in the breed, he's like a spider monkey on Mountain Dew, twenty-four seven, all the time. Uh, he's not, he doesn't really bark that much in the car, but when he does, it's ear piercing loud. But we can take him like, uh, people could walk up to the door, and I really like that, like, he's, uh, when I, we picked him out, reason we picked him out is this right here, he's always looking around, I really like that. That feature is what's, something that kind of bite me in the butt, because he's always looking around, he can be playing with something after he just did something, and he's ready to do the next thing, so he is, he's Tom Tiger. Uh, he's a blast. He's not much of a, uh, not much of a morning person, our first time that we got up to Fort Locke in the morning to feed him, to do our day shift, he did not like that. He's been, uh, I know you guys got to see when, at, uh, that was week, like, week three or four, I know, it was probably, it was probably week three, and, uh, that training was the best, worst time that I've ever had, like, it was nonstop, twelve hours a day. I got yelled at, like it was my job, all day long, every day, and, but, yeah, I couldn't say enough about the training they were training that. They know this stuff, I know. They're, they're fantastic, and I'm, I'm very blessed to be given this opportunity, and I want to thank, I have a fan foundation for, for everything they did, for the trustees, for a lot of everything that happened, the community that pitched in. I just wanna, we've got there, we've got there and worked.
We won't try, because they'll just give themselves.
We did go to the football game, and he was doing really good, I walked him around the outside of the football game, and this kid was throwing the football, and he's like, huh?
Do you have any questions? Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you.
See Blitz?
For fiscal officers.
I don't really enjoy following that, but I will try, because I can't be nearly as cute as that dog, so, um. Tonight, for the trustees, I have for your review and for your signature certifications of purchase orders issued since the last meeting, and certifications of checks, electronic and paper written since the last meeting. Uh, in front of you, I have put all the, the reports for the ending of the month of August, included, and that is the receipt report, and, um, it is the one with the blue banner, I did highlight something on there that I wanted to point out, and I wanted to point out, um, to the fire department as well, that Jason Bunker has completed his tuition reimbursement. He came in on August the fourth and paid the, the balance due on his tuition, tuition reimbursement, so that is, um, closed, I put a copy in his personnel file, um, and, um, I gave you all a copy just in case, I just thought it wouldn't hurt to put that one in his personnel file, so that we know it's closed. Um, but moving on, there are your management reports for the month of August, there's a revenue status report, a fund status summary, the, then there is the appropriation status report, and for the purposes of all these reports, we're about sixty-eight percent through the year, whether it's revenue or expenditures. Um, there's also, for your review and your signature, the appropriation supplement report, it is, um, it's two-sided, and I need your signature on the backside. I also have for your review and for your signature, the credit card at a station for the month of June. This was a pretty big month, expenditure-wise, it seemed like everybody had a large expenditure, but, um, that's the, um, exception and not the rule. And then I have the bank reconciliation for August, um, no surprises there, and finally, I have for you the interest report, uh, to date, from January to August, we are eighty-one percent higher in our interest collections than we were at this year, at the same point last year, so, um, again, the hybrid checking is been a, a really good, good, uh, move for us, and then, um. Finally, um, next on the agenda will be the, um, submitted for your approval is legislation for an amended certificate, and we received the EMAC reimbursement from two thousand twenty-four Hurricane Milton of thirty-one hundred dollars and some change, I would like to amend the revenue and appropriations budget, so that the fire department has access to that, and then we just recently received a, from critters and canines, critters and cruisers, thank you, I knew it was, it was alliteration. Critters and cruisers, uh, through the Hamilton Community Foundation, we received a donation of five thousand dollars for the canine fund, and as you could see, um, he's, he's well worth it, so, uh, we will have that legislation for you to sign off or to approve.
Hopefully.
And that is it for me, unless any of you have any questions about any of the reports.
Consideration for legislation, purpose of financial allow the receipt, funds received from the donation of five thousand dollars for the canine program from Hamilton, uh, Community Foundation, on behalf of the critters and cruisers, uh, funds must be added to the police department two thousand twenty-five financial budget, and for the receipt of the funds, uh, received from M, EMCA, uh, for reimbursements of the two, three thousand one hundred twenty-nine dollars thirty-four cents for the two thousand twenty-four Hurricane Milton fund, must be added to the fire departments, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, I need a motion, motion above, uh, twenty-five dash zero five four, lending revenue for the fund and requesting, um, amended certificate, established, uh, estimates, resources, and public county audit, I need a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yeah. Uh, purpose, approval of pay the bills, uh, motion of adoption, two thousand twenty-five dash one zero-two, to pay the bills from presented through the, the fiscal office. Purchase orders, I need a second?
Second.
Discussion, sorry.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am. Administration.
Good evening, first, I'd like to report that two property owners responded to the mailing that was mailed to everyone within the proposed Venice mixed-use overlay district, later in the meeting, under new business, the board can, or, I think under old business, the board can discuss next steps in regards to that project, there's a nuisances update in your packet, and administration has three resolutions on this evening's agenda. The first resolution, uh, is, you've seen it before, it's about entering an agreement with energy alliances to assist with the residential solid waste and recycling competitive bid process, during the last work session, there was a discussion to answer the trustees' question, so, um, you're feel competent to vote on that topic this evening. Secondly, there's more, uh, participants in the national opioid settlement, so it's to authorize entering into the material terms with the additional man, secondary manufacturers, and finally, we did just go through a gov deals option to get rid of obsolete equipment that had value, the total, uh, sold amount was three thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars, but there's a resolution before you to approve the disposal of the items that did not sell, and that's all that administration has this evening.
You have a list of what didn't sell?
What didn't sell or what did?
What did not.
It's on the resolution, there's pictures.
Consideration for legislation purpose, enter into an agreement with friends incorporated, you'll receive the request, uh, for proposals, uh, propose, processes, assessment, and financing, uh, and some, um, finalizing. Solid waste, act, motion for adoption, twenty-five hundred two, that zero zero five, and then you start, that, D flat, E flat, A, cost management of high solid waste removal management costs and reduction, consulting the services of the shit and all vendors of the, of Ross Township, that's the half, and authorizing the township industry to have required documents, second?
Second.
Discussion?
Uh, for clarity, that's resolution two zero two five dash zero five five.
That was, that's the number?
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
Application for two thousand twenty-five dash zero two five five six. So we'll call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Purpose in agreement, material, uh, terms for the proposed national opioid settlement agreement and factors, public guy, Al, Alvin, Mendel.
Uh, at the school.
I, I pick up, I said, uh, in theville, Island, Sun, and Sidus, uh, so associated, distribute the proceeds, proceeds of the courts of Ohio, and he has made the random of undertaking wish for the Ross Township to adopt. Three, that's, you know. Two thousand twenty-five dash five six, to authorize the township industry to accept the material of the new national opioid set, set development, and secondary, second?
Second.
Second?
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Purpose, section five zero five dash one zero, of the Ivan's Vice Code, advised through the board trustees, uh, by resolution, disposal of items, finding it not needed to the public use, is obsolete or on sick for use in which it is a, uh, quarter, uh, the following resolution declares such property to be disposed, move for adoption, resolution two thousand twenty-five dash zero five seven, declaring certain township involuntary items no longer needed, accused obsolete or on sick, so that use acquired, uh, having no value, and authorizing the disposal of salvage, therefore, uh, second?
Second.
Discussion?
Are, are those all from the fire department?
The resolution lists what department each item is associated with.
Yeah.
Sure.
So it'd be like, apart from like old used homes, any?
No, this is more tech.
Yeah, it's a lot of tech stuff that we got, burn all, salvaged all their old stuff to us. Um, there was some other stuff, like old iPads and laptops that we had upgraded a long time ago.
And he's taking.
Uh, second.
Discussion?
To clarify, I believe trustee Blower had already seconded the motion.
Okay.
Discussion?
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am. We're in a fun one.
Well, hello, everyone, it's me again, um, the monthly totals for August. Perfect end, I've made a hundred and twenty-three incident responses, um, most a hundred and fifty total responses by the township, um, bunch of mutual aid this month, um, couple of serious car crashes along Hamilton, or Ross River again, I don't know what's going on there with that dip, but these kids are not taking care of it. As you can see, uh, the year over year, um, in, in August, we're up, twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-three, um, so our numbers are continually on the upward trend again, um, inspections for August, um, did, like I talked about last month, we did our eighteen re-inspections, we did eleven new, um, and we did the school just before they, that's a tough undertaking, those are some pretty big buildings, and we're sitting there for a couple of days. All that, uh, got a letter in the mail from, uh, a nice resident, he just wanted to let us know, to let you know, that, uh, there's not many communities in which we are blessed with the care and concern, um, of the fire departments, um, as Ross Township, and she was very thankful we took her husband to the hospital. And he did pretty good, uh, the other thing I can say is, um, I got a phone call the other day from not a Ross Township resident who brought their young son into Ross Township just for our care, they had an incident, and he did not feel comf, he wasn't comfortable, he just, it was closer for him to get his son in his car, to drive him to our firehouse, for us to take him to the hospital, and without that care, and without that speed, um, his injuries could have been much more severe, so, they're thankful for us, and we're thankful for them. Um, the only other thing I have for you, um, is for, we're gonna put in, we need authorizations of, for, um, another application for the Hanover Life Squad Fund, uh, this is for four AEDs, it's going to provide, um, AEDs in all of the public Ross Township public buildings that we have. Oh, yeah, and the open house, I forgot about that, sorry, uh.
So everyone knows the open house.
It's gonna be in, uh, October, it's October eleventh, um, at Station one or two, uh, just on the other side of Millville, um, we hope to see you all then.
On the Hanover Life Squad Funds.
Uh, so the Hanover Life Squad Funds is, um, when it, Hanover Life Squad used to be private, um, and then when they became, they converged with actual Hanover Township, uh, the money they had in the bank went into a, uh, a growth fund, um, and then every year, they allow so much money out, uh, much like the Ross Township Community Fund, um, they have been very grace, grateful for us, we've gotten a lot of things through it, um, that building you see down there, Station one oh one was a lot of it, um, stuff, the net that we have, but they, they provide us with like, between five and ten thousand dollars just every single year, um, so, gonna do AEDs this year.
Uh, purpose, authorize the application for, um, Hanover Life Squad Funds through the Hamilton County Hamilton Municipal Fund for four AEDs, which is, uh.
Automated external calculators.
For use of hard police and road departments, move for the adoption, resolution two thousand twenty-five dash zero five eight, authorizing application and grant from Hamilton County Foundation, and for Hanover Life Squad Funds to assist with the essential costs of automatic external calculators for the fire, police, and road department, and authorizing the fire chief to execute any required documents, uh, in connection with the grant application.
I need a second.
Discussion?
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am. Bro crew.
Saying, we got a, question, we're, that's, sound after this, gig, this gig, all. Calling our, calling the, uh. I, uh, past, there's, no crash data, there's, time data, there's, had a long, had a light there. On her move, homeowner didn't want to pay, this is a neighbor, he'd welcome to pay for it. Other thing. So the park fence coming very hard. On the other side of the fence building. Each probably younger. None of them down there, man. Like some direction on what's wrong. Hey, McCree. If, those five are probably on.
So the fence is what, lady? It's within the ORC, I say definitely. Do, do we give them thirty days to? This is some, you know? Not worse than that. Consideration, purpose, dial request for streetlight, uh, court, police, uh, up there, uh, dash one zero three, to deny the request for streetlight, police, uh, court. Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Police department.
Before we talk.
Before we get to the police department, I have something that might be, Paul, uh, what, here, um, I got a request in writing from a, um, resident that lives on School Road. Um, I've come to learn that School Road is a county road, it is not something that our town should takes care of.
Right.
Um. You told me that there are, is there a sign there that says Hill Box View, or something like that, so we've done what we can do, and their, their approach would be to the county. Okay. I understand where they're at, really, um, I did, I tried to do some rudimentary math, and at thirty-five miles an hour, they travel fifty-two feet per second, in three seconds, that's half of a football field, um, zero to thirty-five, under normal acceleration is going to take four seconds, so when they try to get out of their driveway, they're, they do have a problem, I understand the problem, um, but it is not the township's road or street to take care of. Okay, all right, well, then I will, I will, uh, direct her to the county, who in the county did she call, if she wants to pursue it?
A big, uh.
Road Operations Department? Get their number up. Uh, Chief Gerhardt, can you see that as a, as a potential crash issue if my numbers are correct?
Uh, yeah, so I've, I've pulled that data for you.
For you to be asking about that.
So, um, we had one crash, I think, two years that didn't. Backing out. Got hit by. Does necessarily factor in that? They have crashes, but most of them are ECTAs that like appear at the intersection or, or at the stop sign. Somebody is attempting the other portion because they're. We have about twenty citation written on that area. So we, we're doing speed enforcement on School Road on that area.
Within what period? Within what period is this?
Uh, this is. On these, they're seven twenty-five also. They have a lot of extra watch patrol there. They're sitting down there. Just being visible running in, just not getting violators or the call log. So long, so we do, we have these in place prior to, it's one of the areas that we. Action and do extra controls. Just generating necessarily the. Take the wheel. We, we have lots of roads.
The one crash was within how long?
Uh, I think it was two or three years ago.
Okay.
The other crashes that we have were about.
I, I see the police cars sitting in, uh, church lot up there too.
It's a lot of moves. Intersection. And I can provide that data.
Thank you.
Hey, consideration of purpose, annual step increases. He saw Sean Schamper after all. The adoption motion twenty-five.
He's not giving his report.
That wasn't his report.
I know you guys think I talk a lot, but.
He was, he was adding.
All right, I'm gonna give the reports and then I'll tell you.
Okay, sorry.
No, you're fast. Um, so real quick, calls for service. This month, the month of August, we had three hundred and thirty total calls for service. Accidents. We had, um, four drug activity arrests, nine. Four O B I for the month. Twenty suspicious vehicle calls. Business checks, we had a hundred and forty-two. Occasion check sixty-eight. Exit patrols long. A hundred and fifty-one. We had a hundred and ninety-five. Engagement for the month, we had, uh, ten different community engagement events, which are. Different ones. They could be tiny, though. National night out, even though I did all the social. Social media.
Posted, it wasn't raining.
Any, uh, we still had a great turnout for that. I got dumped by kids like four thousand times. Uh, in the dump booth and the van off five hundred people showed up to that. So considering how hard it was for, um, really good turnout for us, I think the fire problem coming down, cutting up a car, whatever. Obviously, this was the highlight of the entire thing, not, not anybody else. Also attended the Ross Local School District, uh, convocation. I had to hear the band play at that. And if you ever, I mean, I. Man, if you hear them up close in a, in a fire, they are amazing. It was, it was really a pleasure to be invited by Dr. Go do that. Uh, went to the American Legion. We also did a meet and greet with Blitz there. We gave them an award. Um, L T was at SWAT competition for the region that threw about four. And then we attended, uh, Creators and Cruiser event in Hamilton this past weekend, which, um, great turnout, actually ran out of rent. Cars, and that is a nonprofit that. Hamilton Community Foundation, you know, you. Yeah, I'm pouring a support for that. It's just amazing. I got to attend my first Oktoberfest just down the road, and that was some great food. So, they had good weather for that. So if you haven't done that, um, I highly suggest the, uh, next year. Um, some of the community events coming up, we have our annual fish with a cop. That will be.
The, um, the twenty-seventh of September, one P M. to four P M.
If you don't know how to fish, but I'll be there cooking or doing something along those lines. They don't think they'll let me touch a fishing pole at this point in time. Uh, but if you don't have fishing poles, come on out. It's a free event. We'll have food free there. Uh, look for our posts on social media. That'll get you all the information that you need. So total community engagement again for the last month was three eight hundred feet. Uh, real quick, um, O B I task force, we just ended our grant period. I wanted to start giving some of the numbers on this for that we do. But we're counting our task force. So for the month of August, we ran over forty enforcement hours, which is at no cost to the taxpayer. That is funded by a grant from N S U. Uh, and it puts an officer out there on the road, just keeping the state for people distracted, drunk, impaired drivers. I have thirty-six traffic stops, issued eleven citations, had two felony arrests, um, had one O B I, seven speed citations, and issued sixteen warnings. And I've three misdemeanor arrests, just in those thirty-eight hours that got there. Very fortunate. I always tell them, if they have extra hours, we. Task force. July, August drone report, um, Theo Stamper had seven police related call out for the drone. Uh, he had a couple of open burns that the fire department went along with. He used a drone for some stuff. A warrant arrest, couple of criminal trespass, and he assisted corering with a incident. Also had five, uh, community engagement in that. That same time. Uh, Detective Minix case updates. Um, he had a felony theft. He signed some warrants for theft and forgery. Um, our victim stole, one of our victims had their wallet stolen. She started writing checks and everything else out of their bank accounts. He referred a mortgage fraud, um, to the FBI Cincinnati office. High state. Hitch fraud case, that's gonna be a lot larger than our victim, just our victim alone. So they're working on a case junction with him. We had, uh, he recovered, uh, and identified the subjects that stole a, um, truck from Welch Salmon Gravel. That's gonna lead to a multi-state also indictment there. Criminal enterprise that was dealing, going all over the place. Different businesses like. Really good job with him. And then he has two major theft cases that is currently working with prosecutor's office. We'll talk more about those cases because progress will be due. But you heard Sergeant, uh, Liddell talk about just the end of two weeks that he's out there on the road. He already had, um, seizures of, uh, fentanyl, cocaine, and methamphetamine. And this is just residual effect. That's the gun that he took out of one of the, uh, drug sniffs, which is someone who is not allowed to carry a gun, that is a convicted.
Gun, so they will.
Very soon. Evidence of his disability. So, three weeks, he's taken a. Probably save somebody.
That is local.
Um, one of the persons in the vehicle was a local person and then local, but not in our town. But it gets the, not that. Same process. Um, and then the other thing I have for the board tonight is legislation. Um, Theo Stamper has, um, is eligible for his step increase, the step three for police officer. It's his annual step increase and all, all is scheduled to go from step one to two. Sheriff policies.
Where do we stand on the flock cameras?
Oh, okay, question. So, block, the longest thing with block has been the O dot. So all the permitting, the site surveys have been done. I have been on block nonstop over this. And if you go look, see the one, I think somebody cut down the other little five. But we just got approval. Hamilton Cleaves was done. And then when we got the secondary approval for seven, that took longer, but O dot has cleared that also. So they've done all three, all four site surveys, just getting the equipment here. Hopefully this month can then install them there. But if you go down Hamilton Cleaves right there by, uh, Skyline, see a little white flag. Yeah, I don't care if people know where they are. If you don't want to.
Hit it then.
Go away, all the way around and don't come into Ross. Problem solved.
Thank you. Sorry, Amber.
Oh, you're fine.
All right, uh, annual, uh, purpose is the annual step up increase, uh, for office police officers Sean Schamper and Josh Stoll. Uh, moved for the adoption of motion. Number twenty-five, dash one zero four, to approve the pay rate. Change from full, full, uh, time officer Sean Schamper in, uh, step two. And police officer upgrade to police, uh, officer step three. Uh, pay rate of thirty-one twenty-six an hour effective September the twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty-six. And he approved the pay rate change for part-time officer Josh Stoll to step one police officer. The next date. Pay rate, uh, it's a step two. Pay rate of twenty-nine eighty-three effective September the seventh, two thousand twenty-five. These actions are in compliance with the current staffing level, pay summary, and resolution. I need a second.
Second. Discussion. Full call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes ma'am. Township business, oh. Menace mixed overlay history, next steps. Said you got a couple of letters?
You can call.
Okay.
They just said they received a letter, were told to call, that they were calling. I told them I would let them know what the next steps were after the board permit, what the next steps were.
Is our letter clear that? In order to do that, if, if it's to be done, then it has to be perpetuated by one of the people that received the letter?
I got the letter.
Am I right in saying we can't do anything until somebody forces the issue on us?
Anything else from the board? New business, we schedule October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five work session due to the conflict with Butler County Township Association. I thought that means, uh, on the eleventh of October.
They, the October meeting is the annual dinner.
Okay.
And because of, they're having it at Cafe Lee, there was a conflict with the school sub, the school schedule. And this happened last year as well. So they moved it from the second Thursday to the third Thursday, which, um, we're not the only township that's having a conflict, but Gary Salmon has reached out and said, ask us if we would kindly reschedule. Um, so that our trustees and myself and administrator Kyle and anyone else, uh, on staff would like to attend.
Okay, we wanna check. Fifteenth is a Wednesday, right?
Um, the fifteenth is the third is, that. Oh, I think this implies that they're, uh, we are suggesting moving it to Wednesday, the fifteenth, because normally it would be.
Okay.
Pardon? This, the meeting is actually on the sixteenth.
So this would be.
Hit before.
To schedule it to the fifteenth. I will not be here that whole week, so it doesn't matter to me what you all do.
Works for me.
So the fifteenth?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, we got it.
Thank you.
Anything else on the board?
Yeah, I'll just make a, a quick thing. Um, administrator Kyle and I were at a P U D. I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago, maybe, have we already talked about that? Station up there. Um, somebody wanted to put a gas station in the location at Kraus and one twenty-eight. And that is not something that is within the U D. Um, I spoke with the people who wanted to build it and hung up with them as I pulled in the parking lot here. I think they're done with it, but I'm not sure. They may try to force it a little bit. I don't know. Um, they own, they own a lot of gas stations and various other businesses. Business acumen is very high. Um, I explained to them that the P U D, according to the zoning department manager, uh, Mr. Adigway, that that was not one of the allowed uses in that I for one would, would stand by that because that's what we did with Mr. Waldorf when he asked for a zoning change. From what it was to be two. And the commissioners upheld that. Um, it is a, it would be a Shell branded.
Branded gas station. I don't know what.
They would call it, but it, it is from Shell. Um, I also told them that there was a pretty heavy response from the township that was anti-gas station. And he took that into consideration. He said that he didn't want to put a gas station somewhere where he wasn't welcome, where they weren't welcome, where the group wasn't welcome. Right? I didn't say anything to that, but that's, that's, he, he got the point. Um, the other, oh, that, that was a three issues. One, it would be in conflict with what happened with Mr. Waldorf. Seemed to be a slap in the face to him, um, that there wasn't public support for it and that it wasn't within the P U D. So it is, it's my opinion that they're gonna stop. Got more money than the township, so if they wanna continue to fight, that fight before, it's okay. But, um, I think, I think we're done with that. So, just wanted to let, anybody who's not read what I did on Facebook, that's, that's what happened.
I, I seen your initial emails going out like, I wonder why he's doing that.
Yeah.
When, I seen your, um, another email, um, and I didn't understand what you were doing. And when I read it, I, I greatly appreciate your legwork in catching that and, and being right up front and, and hopefully stopping them from doing what township residents don't want.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna talk to their lawyer, who I thought was in that meeting. They said their lawyer wasn't there, but clearly there was a lawyer there. He was the English talking chap.
I think he was more like their engineer.
Okay. Well.
Did he actually purchase it?
No.
Oh, so they don't have.
They're, they're trying to do, do diligence. Um, and see what the temperature of the township is before, before they go any farther. I also, I, I told them that there's, you know, there's four gas agents here right now. People in the township say they don't.
The show.
They don't need a fifth one.
Announcements, anything meant from the administrator, anything from the board?
I have an announcement. This is just a general public service announcement. Our, uh, good neighbors to the right of us here flubs their last day of September seventh, so. Act now, or it'll be, or it'll be spring before they're back. I know. Some of us take it harder than others.
We talked about in a previous thing, asking them to do a little short piece of concrete there.
They put in two stepping stones.
Did they? Okay.
Mm-hmm, just like shy of, like where my car is, there are two nice dice, you can get across easily without having to walk in the rocks.
Once I start smelling ice cream.
I know. You get distracted.
Thank you.
They can't, once the students go back in, they don't have anybody to work, so.
First funds is anything, nothing from the administration, anything from the board? Topics for September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five work session. Dan Devers, uh, Energy Alliance Incorporated, view the residential solid waste and second cost containment and, and reduction resulting in services from complete, complete, oh, or, complete, bidding process. Um, and then also limited house fuel dispatch. Didn't happen today, so.
From the last.
From the last sentence. Okay. And then, uh, see, uh, topics needed for the whole.
That would the board like Dan Devers to attend the work session just to kind of go over
Without.
The process for the.
Yes, please.
Okay.
We're gonna go into executive session, so I need move to motion for two. X zero, one zero five. Retired executive session to discuss the employment compensation of public employees according to higher. We retire the executive session to discuss the employment compensation of public employees according to higher price code. One twenty-one dash two two three one, time of the meeting is.
Six fifty.
We're tired too.
You need a second? You need a second?
Need a second.
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 Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Who seconded? Who seconded?
Not the idea.